Good evening and welcome. I'm Andrea Mulroney and I'm a board member of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County, and we are thrilled that you're here with us this evening, both in the audience and also at home, watching the debate with the candidates for Scranton City Council. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit volunteer organization, and as volunteers we hold these types of events to help voters make an informed choice on Election Day. Our debates are organized as a public service, and we hope that you'll be asking yourself questions like this, so that you can judge the performance of the candidates. Do they answer the questions directly, give specifics, and support their positions with facts? Do they talk about their own policies and positions, or mostly attack their opponents? Can they realistically carry out the promises they are making? Do they show how their experience qualifies them to hold office? Couple of the debate details, I ask that everyone in the audience silence your mobile devices, and that you hold your applause and comments until the end. We want to try and move through as many questions as we can. This will be approximately a 45 to 60 minute debate, and the candidates are seated alphabetically on the stage. They will all answer the same set of questions, and no questions were given to any of them in advance. All questions will have a two-minute response limit, and they're allowed up to two rebuttals of one minute each. They can use the full two-minute allotment at one time if they so desire. I would also like to thank and acknowledge our partners in our debates for this election season. As always, the University of Scranton, whose generosity allows us to be here in this lovely building this evening, the Moskowitz Theater, and also ECTV, who provides the taping and allows us to get them onto our website as well. So, thank you to Mark, thank you to Dr. Jean Harris and the Political Science Department at the University of Scranton. So, let's welcome, start by welcoming our candidates this evening. So, on the stage tonight, we have three candidates for Scranton City Council. There are two open seats for City Council that we will be electing. And the candidates this evening, David Bergerhoff. David is a Scranton resident, born and raised. He did move away for a while, went to Dallas High School, but he came back, and he graduated from the University of Scranton as a communication major. He's currently an entrepreneur, he's single, he has a 16-year-old son, a brother and three sisters, one of whom is serving in the services, and we welcome you here this evening. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Wayne Evans, and I should say also that David is on the Republican ticket. Also on the Republican ticket is Wayne Evans. Wayne is a Scranton resident, graduated from Scranton Central High School, holds an associate degree in Business Administration from Penn State University, and is a licensed Realtor and broker, so he has received certificates as well for that. Wayne has been involved in several governmental agencies, or commissions I should say, over the years, previously serving on the Scranton City Planning Commission, the Home Rule Charter Study Commission. He's also been a member of the Lackawanna River Corridor Association, and Harb, the Historical Architectural Review Board. He is currently a Scranton City Council member, he is Chair of the Elm Street Steering Committee, and still a member of the Architectural Heritage Association. He's married, has four sons, six grandchildren. Welcome, thank you for being here this evening, Wayne.
Thanks Andrea.
And Tim Perry, and Wayne, I should say also, I apologize, is on the Republican ticket. Our Democratic candidate this evening joining us is Tim Perry. Tim is a Scranton resident, educated at Scranton Central High School, graduated from Lackawanna College with a degree in Business Administration. He's been a district manager for over 20 years at Long John Silver's, and is currently working for Applebee's as a district training manager. He has been a member of the Manuka Lions Club, and the Ancient Order of the Hiberians, John F. Kennedy Division, and a member of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority. So, welcome this evening, Tim. I would like to mention that Bob McGough, current City Council President, and one of the other candidates who is on the ballot for City Council, cannot be with us this evening, that he's got some health issues, so I'd like to ask that everyone keep Bob in your thoughts and prayers, as I know he's going through a hard time. So, let's get started this evening. There are no opening statements, and we'll start with the first question. We drew names to see who would answer the first question first, and it just so happens alphabetically that Dave will answer the first question. So, I just want to start out a little bit of information for the audience on what exactly the job description is of City Council members, per our Home Rule Charter. So, this is what, the Charter is basically the constitution of the city of Scranton, and what it says is that "The Mayor and Council shall jointly be the governing body of the Scranton City Government, and that they are divided among the executive and the legislative branches, and that all powers and duties of City Government which are legislative in nature shall be exercised and performed by Council, and all powers and duties which are executive in nature shall be exercised and performed by the Mayor." So, that comes right from our Home Rule Charter. So, David, let me start out by asking you, the gritty reality of being hired by the voters to serve on City Council is that it will be a really difficult job. Why do you want this supposedly part-time job that pays $12,500 a year? You have two minutes.
Well, I hope I answered this well, because I actually think this is the one question that's in my wheelhouse. First of all, it's a low salary fine, I'm not in it for the money, but in all honesty, I do odd jobs, I do labor, I work hard every single day, I solicit my labor, I solicit my work. I live two years in advance, that means all my bills are paid basically two years in advance. I live debt-free, I've worked my whole life to be debt-free, I do have a small amount of home mortgage, outside of that, there was no other debt in my life. So, I can afford to do this job, number one. I got plenty of time to do this job, number two, and I got plenty of energy. All day today, I was digging ditches, working on sewer lines, that's all I did was work before I come here. I'm not tired, I got a ton of energy left. People always ask me, "How many coffees did you have?" I haven't even had one yet, okay? That's what you need in City Council, you need someone that's going to get out there and work. I basically look at it, 13 grand a year, will say, "I'm willing to give you 1,000 hours outside of my council business. I'm willing to give you 1,000 hours of time that I come out, I meet with you personally, I do work in your neighborhoods, we get together with neighborhood associations, we do whatever is necessary in order to get the city moving again in the right direction." You know, there's a lot of obstacles, every time I try to do something, I was just reading an article that covered Ozzy Quinn, trying to get the neighborhood associations up and running, and they're trying to do blight control, blight projects, and there's always an obstacle. "We can't get on these properties, we don't have the permission," or "we can't get here because it's a liability issue." That's what I'm trying to bring to the city, I'm trying to take these hours of time that I can give to you. I want to go and talk to state reps, I want to work with the legislature locally, and anyone else that can get these laws changed. I'm not necessarily working for my four years, it's a future, Scranton, these guys are going to tell you it's about the future, right now it's about the present, in all honesty. But I'm working for to change things in the present on a very small level, coming to your neighborhoods, and I'm also looking to change legislation and get people in here from the outside, look at other communities, see what they've done, and bring that to the city as well, to plan for the future. But you're going to hear a lot of things about the future, Scranton, everybody knows there's no future here, because people are leaving. We talked, the last debate, all they did was mention the seniors. I'm here to work for every citizen, not just the seniors, that's pandering. I'm not going to select a certain group and tell you I'm going to do more for you than anyone else.
Thank you. Wayne, the question goes to you. As you know, the gritty reality of being hired by the voters to serve on City Council is that it is difficult. Why do you want this supposedly part-time job?
Well Andrea, some people would say that you have to be a little crazy, and I will definitely cop to that. But the reality is that my entire adult life has been spent in the community, doing community service, being civic-minded, being selfless, either working in the neighborhood groups, the Elm Street Program, on the City Planning Commission. So, I was prepared for this for a long time, and I'll be honest with you, you know, I love it, I love it right now, what I'm doing. The challenges in City Hall are great, we're making progress, I think we have a very, very good council, and we're working with the administration to get things done that have to be done. So, I want the job because I want to continue what I'm doing, the work I've started, and I want to finish the job.
Thank you. Tim, the question goes to you. Why do you want this part-time job?
Well, and the first thing, you know, it's almost a loaded question, because I'm sure Wayne can attest to that, that part-time part of the job, it's really not, I think even Dave spoke to that, it's a full-time job. But, I mean, just talking about it puts a smile on my face. I absolutely endear the fact that I'm going to be, if you guys honor me with a vote on November 3rd, working for the city of Scranton, working for you guys. I have my lovely family right there, I have friends that own businesses in the city, and I have a lot of other family members that are, and friends that just need help, they need leadership. The city is in dire need of strong leadership, and that's something with my background and my education that I bring, I bring strong, firm leadership to the city, in a time that it really needs it. And I'm excited to be honored with the City Council job come November 3rd, if you guys will have me. And it's time, it's time we really put an end to status quo in the city, and start moving forward.
Thank you.
Excuse me, may I use my rebuttal time to ask a question of the two candidates?
No, I ask the questions.
Well, I have a very interesting question, but I'll get to it.
So, Wayne, this question goes to you, and I want to focus on expenses, okay? We're going to talk about revenues later, but I want to focus first on expenses. So, Scranton, as you know, continues to suffer from a structural deficit. Our revenue doesn't cover our expenses. What can or should City Council specifically do to reduce expenses? And as I continue to say in every debate that I moderate, eliminating wasteful spending is not specific, and is therefore not an acceptable answer. So, what can or should City Council specifically do to reduce expenses?
Well, the two key components to the Amarosa Plan, which is now our recovery plan, are the monetization of the parking authority and the monetization of the sewer authority. That's how you reduce expenses. We have no business being in the parking business, at some point in time, that has to happen, and monetization of sewer authority will allow us to either reduce expenses through the structural deficit, or super fund the pensions, which are severely underfunded. So, those are two key components that I believe we have to get done, and get done soon.
Okay, thank you. Tim, the question goes to you. What can or should City Council specifically do to reduce expenses?
Well, that question, also, Wayne answered it really well. The city has found themselves in businesses that they don't belong in, and we've stayed in these businesses way too long, until we get over our head in either debt, or in a spot where we can't get out of it any longer. And neither one of those businesses, well, the parking authority hasn't been profitable for us, and to recover that business, to get it to where it needs to be, we can't afford that, the city can't afford that. So, we're stuck in, we're stuck in a hole, and that needs to turn into, we need to turn that into instant cash for the city, there's really no way around it. The city unfortunately is at a point in time right now where we can't afford to pull out any kind of revenues without immediately replacing it, we cannot just wait and see any longer. We need to act fast, and we need to make sure that these budgets get balanced before the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Dave, the question goes to you, remember it's a question on expenses. What can or should City Council specifically do to reduce expenses? And you have two minutes.
I like the fact that they brought up the Amaroso Plan to start off with, because we paid that guy a lot of money, and it pretty much like, sounds like he's telling us to do the same thing. You're offering me 13 grand, you want me to solve all the problems of the city, and I'm willing to try to do that, so I'm going to tell you how I would do it. Basically, I would like to see a 10% cut across the board on expenses, you go to each department, you tell them to do it, it's always a common platform that Republicans and some Democrats push, but there's always room to cut, we all know that, you all have to cut your budgets in order to pay these higher taxes, it's time we ask the city to do the same. Now, I don't know where they're going to make those cuts, because I don't have access to every department, but I guarantee you cut their budgets by 10%, they'll find a place to make those cuts. Secondly, privatization or monetization of our two assets, if they're worth buying by anybody in the private sector that is willing to invest, then how can't the government make money with it? We don't have many assets left, if they're revenue makers, let's make money. I think in the county debate, it was kind of funny, because he said the jail is a money-making thing, and, not that I like prisons, but if it's making money, and it wasn't, it was backwards the way they did it, but the point is, anything we have that makes money is obviously something you want to keep. If we're losing money in the parking garages, or in the sewer authority, a captive audience, we all have sewer lines, we all need sewer systems, it's amazing to me that we can't make money with it, obviously it's an administration issue, it's the way they're run. You know, it's real simple, we all know it, somebody, a lot of people have told me, "You want people with common sense?" Well, that's common sense. Someone else is looking to buy something, it must have value, why can't you make money with it? We have tons of empty houses in this city, I would like to see the city move forward on some sort of loan program, and this is where I get a little nuts, because I don't know if this stuff is even possible, but honestly, I'd like to offer the houses to people for $50,000. I would like to take the taxes and look out over 20 years and tell them, "Your rate won't go up, but here's your taxes for the next 20 years, let's say it's $2,000 a year, 2 times 20 is $40,000, let's put that in the mortgage immediately, and they can pay it on their mortgage payment over the next 20 years, they'll never see their taxes go up." We'll remit that money to the schools and the county, and we'll remit it only by the year. But what I want the banks to do is give us the full amount of money accessible now, so if we get the $40,000 to put towards our debts today, and we let the homeowner pay off the debts through these banks, I think that's the way you do it. I think at least it's an idea, and if people want to pick them apart, that's what I like.
Thank you. So, the next question goes first to Tim. So, during the Lackawanna County Commissioner debate, I asked a question about reassessment, and of course reassessment impacts Scranton, impacts all of the municipalities in Lackawanna County. So, I want to ask you now, should Lackawanna County reassess property values now, and I know this is a county issue, not a city issue, but if you believe that that's true, what can you do as a City Council member to put pressure on the county to conduct a reassessment? And if you don't support it now, then why not? And you have two minutes, and it goes first to Tim.
Well, the short answer to the reassessment is yes. I've been on board for countywide reassessment now for a long time. Luzerne County had a reassessment, Lackawanna County started reassessment, and the claim there is that there's just not enough money. It's a million, millions of dollar project that the county does not have money for. It absolutely needs to be done. Anybody who lives in the city knows that every time Scranton reaches out to either the county or the state to help us with our finances, for whatever reason, we, we're not getting a lot of help from the county and the state, we're getting told no a lot. No is an answer that, you know, we cannot accept any longer. This assessment, we need to put pressure on our county government to get this done. Now, you ask specifically, "How do we put pressure on this?" That's a very good question, because other than asking, you know, what can be done, the pressure is put on by every voter in this room, and how they vote. That's the pressure. The pressure's in the people, the pressure's in, you know, if somebody really wants something enough, the message will get sent. You know, I'm just one person, Wayne's one person, Dave's one person with a microphone, but let me tell you, a room full of people who vote have a lot more power than one guy with a microphone. And that's what our politicians need to start learning. Enough is enough, if it needs to happen, we need to get out there, we need to vote, and we need to make sure they understand how we feel. And yeah, I'm for reassessment, absolutely.
Thank you. Dave, so the question goes to you, do you think we should reassess, and what could you as a City Council member do to put pressure on the county to conduct a reassessment, if you believe that that's what we should do?
Well, it's kind of like an odd question, in a way that, right now the state representatives have been working on that Prop 176, I believe, they're trying to eliminate property tax in some way, shape, or form. Are we still going to need the values, are they even going to be legitimate if that passes? Now, okay, is it going to pass, isn't it going to pass? That's politics, you don't know. We're asking about somebody who will fight for you. Actually, with the mic in front of me, I may be as powerful as 100 people, 1,000 people in a room, because that's how confident, and I can make a difference, and bring the voice of the people to the people. You know, a lot of times we say that people don't have any power, it's because they don't vote, so I encourage everybody to vote, but I don't need the voters to help me, there's not enough of you. I need the voters and non-voters to help me. You know, you need to be the ones that reach out to your representatives, you need to be the ones that put pressure on them, and you need to come in and have me help you do that, and find out who you reach out to, that's fine with me, that's what I want to do. But the reassessment, it's a real simple question like everything else, what are we going to gain, and what are we going to lose? The reassessment, one person's go down, another person stays the same, another guy goes up. How's that going to impact people throughout the county? We're all worried about the seniors and everybody else, we need to look at all these things. How am I supposed to answer that question without more specifics? You could say yes or no, but you'd be silly to do that. Give me the facts, put me in the place where I get these facts, and I'll give you an answer of yes or no.
Thank you. Wayne, the question to you on reassessment, what can we do, should we do, as a City Council member?
Well, for the record, I have the record for saying the word reassessment more times than any other City Councilman in the history of Scranton. And I firmly believe that reassessment not only should happen, it has to happen. My background is basically as a real estate broker, I was the Director of Assessment when the last reassessment was going on in Lackawanna County, and I was also a consultant for Luzerne County during their reassessment. Our property owners are getting crushed by the lack of a reassessment. Homeowners, every single day, are losing their homes to high taxes because of the reassessment. We're the same properties that are worth $65,000, with an assessment based from 1965, when the house was only five years old, and they're paying $5,000 in taxes and they can't sell their house. Economic development is vital, and a reassessment will turn our economic engine around. So, reassessment is a must-have, we have to do it. Last week at City Council meeting, City Council sent a letter to the county commissioners, asking that they begin a reassessment immediately. What can we do? More of the same, as Tim said, the people have to speak, this election's important. I heard one county commissioner commit to doing a reassessment tonight. So, the other thing we can do, believe it or not, if it gets any worse, we have the ability to take Lackawanna County to court and force a reassessment. I hate to see that happen, but it's something we may have to do.
Thank you. So, Dave, the next question is going to go to you first, and I want to talk now about revenue. So, what can or should City Council do to increase revenue, other than reassessment? And I'm going to ask you to focus only on realistic options that can be accomplished by City Council. So, focus on revenue, what can City Council do? And you've got two minutes.
Well, if history is any example of what council could do, we're in trouble already. You know, and I'm not trying to be flippant, but that's why I'm sitting up here. Do I have ideas, I'm sure, but as I said, a lot of them, I haven't done the math, and I'm not even sure they are realistic, I guess that's up to the voter to believe that or not believe it. I have small ideas, like perhaps the DPW can set up sort of garbage station somewhere around the city where you can actually access dumpsters with large things like couches and chairs, because it becomes a real issue in the city of blight and dumping, and I'm not saying they have to charge a large fee in order to allow you to dump there, because then you'd end up at the landfill. But we need opportunities in the city to be able to dispose our trash in large amounts like that, at a small location. If you ever went up the landfill, it's a nightmare. So, if you can make just a little bit of money there, that's one place you can make a little bit of money, that's to start off with. Secondarily, there's other things like, I think Scranton should try to start, maybe rehab a home and try a lottery system. Sell tickets for maybe $10, $20, $50, let's figure out a price, let's figure out what the realistic market is to sell lottery tickets, and let's auction up a couple of these blighted houses that we've actually corrected, there may be some revenue there, plus you get stuff back on the tax rolls. I love that idea of taking care of the blight, A, B, and C, I think they call it, the county commissioners, you rate a house, A, it's salvageable, B, it really needs a lot of work, or C, you tear it down. You know, once you get these houses back up and running, sold, and people living in them, obviously there's a larger tax base. You know, we give everything away, even they were mentioning, it's what's an Invenergy, or whatever that energy company going down to Jessup, I was reading an article about it, and it was ironic, they're not demanding tax-free zone, yet we're still offering it to them. Stop offering tax-free zones, let's bring people here who want to pay taxes to the city, stop giving everything away. North Scranton Junior High School looks great, wonderful. You know how many millions of dollars that costs us, and what are we going to recoup from it? Did anybody even ask? They don't even discuss those questions. We have guys come in all the time and offer us things, offer us plans, and they never tell us how much we're going to make, so how you make a decision? Hopefully, as a councilman, I hear those details and I can make better decisions, because I'll tell you one thing, that North Scranton Junior High School is not going to make us a dime, it's going to cost us a lot of money, and everybody's lauding it, it was a bad idea.
Thank you. So, Wayne, the question goes to you, talk about revenue, what can City Council do, what are the realistic options?
I'm going to give you a simple example of something that's not working, and how it can generate revenue. The rental registration ordinance currently is collecting registration from approximately 15% of all the rental units in the city. We have to outsource that, or hire more people to get more properties registered, to increase the revenue, but we can increase the revenue and also reduce the fees each individual property owner. But the byproduct of that is, all these properties aren't registered, there's a good chance they're not paying the garbage bill either. We feel there could be as much as $600,000 to $700,000 to $800,000 in unpaid garbage bills, because of the rental registration ordinance that's not being enforced properly. That's an example of many, many different items that are out there for revenue producers.
Okay, thank you. Tim, the question goes to you, please, focus on revenue, and what should City Council do, realistically, to increase revenue?
Well, the increasing revenue in the city, now you're speaking to my heart, that's something that is an absolute must. I know we already discussed expenditures and cutting expenditures, but as somebody who's run a business for decades, there's only a point where your expenditures will be cut, and then you start to find yourself in a vicious cycle, you're cutting expenditures, but yet you're not improving your revenue, and then you have to cut your expenses, because you're not improving your revenue, and you find yourself where we are right now in the city of Scranton, we're chasing our tail, because we're not actually focusing on the revenue base. Now, something that I would love to do, and I've said this many times over and over, the thumbprint I want to leave on City Council, in the city of Scranton, on my tenure as City Council, is getting that revenue base, getting that needle moved. And the one thing that the city has going for itself, that nobody else in this area has, is affordable housing. Our housing is affordable. Why? Because no one wants to move here, because our taxes are too high. But the housing itself, Wayne's a Realtor, he'll tell you, the housing is very fair, below market value. Anybody who's trying to sell a house will tell you the same thing, and there's a lot of people out there who can't sell their house. What we need to do is, we need to get creative, we have to not take no for an answer, and we need to get some legislative taken care of. Something that I propose is a wage tax rebate to anybody who moves from outside the city of Scranton, inside the city of Scranton to be a property owner, pays property tax, increase our property tax base, that's going to put a relief on all us property owners who are being, we're being punished for owning property in the city. That's the only, the only way I could explain it. But if we can give a temporary rebate to people to come in and give them a pass on that city wage tax, to increase our property revenue, that's going to stop our bleeding. And once that, we get the dominoes to stop falling, we'll move that needle.
Thank you. So, Wayne, this next question will go first to you. I can't believe that in 2015, I am still talking about this, Scranton has been distressed since 1992. Pennsylvania state government can take actions, including passing legislation, that can make governing a financially distressed city easier or more difficult. What state government action do you think is essential to moving Scranton forward? My personal question, how do we get out of distressed status?
Well, like it or not, we're getting out of distressed status in sometime in 2017, because 2016 is the time. Either we are ready, or we're not, but it's going to happen. And I hate to say it, we want to make sure it happens in a positive way. What can we do? State legislature is a key component to a lot of things that we need to do, property tax reform, pension reform, all of these things would help the city of Scranton, but we're not getting action from Harrisburg. I know they're in a budget crunch right now, and they have all their own problems, but realistically, there's major problems there. Another issue is, we need to grow our way out of this, we can no longer tax our way out of distress. There's a program called CRIS, a Community Reinvestment Improvement Zone. Bethlehem has it, Lancaster has it. For some reason, the state legislature likes to exclude Scranton from any of these programs. There's another round coming up, we have to be prepared for it. If we get into that program, we can designate certain parcels downtown, and some in the neighborhoods, for these improvement zones, which will allow taxes that are paid within that zone, to stay in that zone for development. Allentown has a similar program called NIZ, Neighborhood Improvement Zone, and in that zone, in the last four years, there has been either developed, or on the books, $1.2 billion worth of development. That's how we get out of distressed city status.
Thank you. Tim, the question goes to you.
This distressed city status that we've been under since the early 90s, is the elephant in the room, is the monkey on our back, it's a weight that we've all been, we've been there way too long. And we can no longer just depend on the property owners to get ourselves out of it. That's what we've been seemingly going after, we've been, we've been just raising taxes on property owners, we've been trying to nickel and dime our way out of it, but to Wayne's point, and to my point earlier, we need cooperation from state government, we need cooperation from the county government, we need reassessment. I can't explain how frustrated I get when I see things happen in other parts of the state that we can't get our hands on. We can no longer accept no for an answer. This has to happen, it's coming to a head, it's coming to a head soon, and we have to decide on what way we want to come out of the tunnel.
Thank you. Dave, the question to you, how do we get out of being distressed?
Well, they both sound like they have pretty good ideas. I think pretty much what I've said already previously kind of curtails what they said, so I'm going to agree with them. Secondarily though, I said I'm really willing to give you the time to speak to these state reps and that. Take a look at how many letters or how much outreach our council has really done to these reps, they don't do it. You know, I'm going to go down there, what did you mention, Allentown or Bethlehem, wherever it is, I'm going to go there and see what their plan is, I'm going to look at it, if it works, sure, I'm going to bring it back here. But again, I need the black and white, the numbers. I need to know what's the real results of this. We are in a lot of trouble and we're running out of time, that's true. Are we going to fix it before the time is up? Realistically, I think all three of these guys know, or myself and the two of them know, we're not going to be able to fix it. You know, I make the statement, because I like, I guess, little short statements, I say Superman didn't save Smallville, I'm not here to save Scranton, I'm here to fight for it. You know, the thing is, a lot of people are leaving the city. I met so many people the other night who would have voted for me because they're all my friendship, but they don't live here anymore. They've left. So first of all, you have to keep people from leaving the city so we don't continue to lose the tax base. Secondly, you do have to market yourself to businesses. We have to bring in businesses. We have to give them spots where they can locate these businesses, and then we need to keep them here once they arrive. It seems like we offer all these businesses incentives, they come here, you give millions of dollars to Boskows, look what that got you. What a terrible idea the mall was anyway. So it shows how limited the thinking is. We always talk about the future, but no one's thinking about the future, they're thinking about right now. You know, if you want to raise revenues, the best way to do that is bring people back to the city, we all know that. I love the idea of doing something with the wage tax because everybody knows that's why people skip the city. So yeah, maybe that's a good plan, maybe there's a better plan, but it's certainly a good idea. You know, I'm not going to put down good ideas, I'm going to tell you, I'll take every good idea there is. The problem is, I'll make them mine, I'll make them better, and I'll make them happen.
Thank you. Tim, this next question goes first to you. So what are the pros and cons of the Scranton-Abington Planning Association for residents of Scranton? What should we be involved with there?
You know what? I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie to you, I'm not familiar with the plan at all. I'm not familiar with it.
Okay.
Myself either, fair enough.
All right, Wayne?
Well, I've been involved with Sapa from the very beginning, and I've always been a proponent of it. What it's going to do is, it's going to regionalize planning for the communities that are involved in Sapa. And it's a positive, because what it's going to allow it to do is it's going to take some growth areas in the Abingtons that they may not want industrial growth and allow that to be in the city of Scranton where we need industrial growth. So Sapa is a sound plan, it's going to save the city money, it's going to allow us to grow where we need to grow. So I've always been in favor of it, and I think it's a very, very good thing. And finally, this year, this city council passed Sapa after years and years and years of debate. So I'm very happy that we did that.
Okay.
Andrew, can I have a minute?
Yes, please.
Wayne, I mean, is this state, is this, who's in charge of this?
Sapa is the Scranton-Abington Planning Association. Basically, our city planner, Don King, will be our representative on Sapa. So that's our, and what it's going to allow us to do is, we're going to do a new regional plan that's going to basically broaden the zoning code to allow for more uses in different areas. But it definitely will enhance our ability to have industrial growth in the city, in the areas where it deserves to be, certainly not in areas where it doesn't.
Dave, do you want to add anything to that since we kind of had a little discussion going there? I want to be fair to everyone.
You know, I guess I want to add a little something to everything sometimes, but you know, it's ironic to me that Wayne didn't even want to run for council and yet all of a sudden he's going to solve all the problems. You know, you can listen to the people tell you what they're going to do for you, but look at what they've really said, look at where we're going. You know, Tim, no offense, but he did mention family and friends. Isn't that what we're afraid of around here, family and friends? Because that's really not done us too well.
Okay, we were talking about Sapa, so we'll move on.
My point is simply, Sapa's not going to happen or anything else isn't going to happen if we're always looking to do political favors instead of what's best. Math is all that matters to me because the bottom line is, does the budget balance, does it make you money, and is it right?
Okay, so let's move on to the next question. And Dave, you get to answer this question first. So other than finances, what do you see as a top priority issue for the city of Scranton? And again, what specific action can city council take to address it, knowing that city council is a legislative body?
Well, obviously blight, I mean, that's an easy one. I hope everybody says that because that's my biggest problem in the city. As somebody who's been fighting blight for a lot longer than most people in the city, I've probably cleaned up, I don't know, 22, 24 lots in the last three months that made a difference in every neighborhood in this city. If you talk to the neighbors, maybe my name will get out there, they'll tell you, not only did I do a great job, I keep coming back and doing that job. The one guy told me, I'm a man of my word, and you're dang right I am. You know, you need people like that are going to focus on the blight. I mentioned the plan about the A, B, and C with the blight. I have a vacant lot behind my house, I've been fighting with the city for six years to purchase it, and they're standing in my way. Something about this Pittsburgh program, well, let's make it happen. I'm trying to buy this property five years ago and pay taxes on it. Instead, the city tree's tore the roof off of my house and I have $10,000 in damage. You want to talk about people leaving the city? Why am I even sticking around? Funny part is, I'm investing in it. I don't want you to use that against me, please. I just have hope that we can turn the city around. So blight is certainly the main issue.
So Wayne, the question goes to you. Other than finances, what do you see as the top priority issue for the city of Scranton? And what specifically can city council do to address it?
Well, I know they're always interrelated, but the truth of the matter is, one of the major issues in the city of Scranton right now are our pension funds. They're underfunded and they have to be corrected. One of the biggest issues that city council always talks about is, we want to change the ordinances and the makeup of the pension boards. We can't allow for super funding of a pension with the same status quo of what's happened with double pensions, with $5.2 million in disability pensions. We have to find a way, we cannot put good money after bad, so we have to change that. So we have been working with the administration to try to get some language into the ordinance for the pensions to make it better for all involved. We're trying to save the pensions for all of the city employees and all the retirees. That's number one. But this is a runaway train, and we have to put the brakes on this thing once and for all and make it work for everybody.
Thank you. Tim, the question goes to you. So what top priority do you see for Scranton and what could you as a person on city council do?
I think Dave mentioned blight, and blight is a serious issue. But something that I like to do is root cause analysis. The reason why we have so much blight is because we have so many empty houses in the city. We have people who can't afford their houses, they can't sell their houses, they move out, it rents, it gets condemned, and then we have blight in our hands. The main issue that we have is we need to get these houses filled with families, property owners. We need to make that happen, that has to be goal one. Someone mentioned jobs and businesses into the city. Let me tell you, as somebody who's run a business for years on years and years, no business is going to come in here willingly and invest in our city until we start investing in our city. And that has to happen first. We need to invest in our city. And that goes back to my other plan about a wage tax rebate to get people into the city who aren't here right now, and let's get them in, let's get these houses, let's get these houses filled with families, let's show that we invest and we care about our city.
Andrew, if I can take my one minute?
Sure.
On the blight issue, Pat Hinton and myself took a drive down to Hazelton to visit with the mayor and the police chief, and we discovered they were doing quality of life tickets. So we took that back to Scranton, city council passed it, and now they're out working in the neighborhoods, giving quality of life tickets to property owners that were simply not taking care of their properties. There's RFP out currently to hire a company that is going to basically register every foreclosed property in the city of Scranton. We estimate there may be as many as 300. The city stands to make roughly $30,000 on that. Now, that's not a lot of money, but what city council wants to do with that money is we want to create a fund for grants for homeowners to buy those foreclosed properties and use that money to turn them around and live in those properties as families again. So that's just two initiatives that we're working on and have worked on.
May I as well? As far as the blight, you know, since I have actually been defeating it and fighting it, I'll tell you where the problem lies. It lies in the Realtors who don't maintain the properties they have for sale, trust me on that one. It lies in the banks that are supposed to be property managing these properties and don't do their job. That quality of life sounds great, it's an old ordinance, it was around many, many years ago, all they did was bring it back. Go look, trust me, I read it. It's nothing different, it's nothing new, and we don't have the people to enforce it. I had the forester out my house, he told me he has to rip down 500 trees before he gets to mine. I had a guy up in East Mountain trying to help a lady get a drainage ditch dug, and they said, yeah, after we get this and that, like it's a big joke. We don't have the staff. And it was funny as they were talking about creating this, we'll say even this quality of life, the money they're bringing in, they're going to have to hire people to simply do it, so it might be a net neutral thing, that would be good enough if they clean up the blight. But a lot of times, in order to do these other programs, we got to hire more people than we're actually bringing in. So again, please, can we do the math?
Quickly, if I can respond to that, one second, because what people don't know about the quality of life ticket is that the county police patrols are doing the quality of life tickets, and every police officer in the city of Scranton, every single one, has the ability to write a quality of life ticket. So that's over approximately 150 people that have the ability to write the ticket. So I think we have the manpower to do it.
Okay. So Wayne, this next question goes first to you, and I want to talk about public-private partnerships. So public-private partnerships are becoming more common throughout the country as governments try to address fiscal stress. We're not alone. What are your thoughts on the pros and cons of such partnerships? And can you give an example of something that you think might work in a public-private partnership that would help Scranton?
Absolutely. There's been a lot of talk about putting a ready market terminal type business in the Steamtown Mall. It's got a lot of legs on Facebook, people talk about it all the time. I had a conversation with the director of a market called the Easton Public Market that's going to be opening up in downtown Easton in an historic building. And what they're going to have there is 15 vendors, food vendors, grocery vendors, you know, basically a mini ready market terminal. And how did that happen? A nonprofit and a for-profit working with the city of Easton. Easton gave them a bond issue and a grant to get started, and it's working. Already, they've, the building isn't even open yet, and they've leased out all of their space. So I'm going down to Easton next week to meet with the director and go over that. I've already had a conversation with John Vasaliga's representatives at the mall, and we're going to see if we can put something together between the city, the mall, and something similar to that project.
Okay, thank you. Tim, the question to you on public-private partnerships.
That's a huge, a huge advantage to a city. Any city that has a private and public partnership are usually successful cities. Something that I would like to see, if you talk to any business owner out there, the one thing Scranton really, really likes to do is charge mercantile tax. It's a hot topic to anybody that owns a business in the city of Scranton. Unfortunately, the city is in such a state, we can no longer take away mercantile tax or give them a break on mercantile tax without immediately replacing that in the budget with another revenue stream. We don't have another revenue stream because if we had it, it'd already be in there. Something that I would like to see between us is having a Scranton sells to Scranton type of program where if we can get a Scranton business to, on a contractual basis, offer a good product at a good price to somebody within the city and the city-to-city business, any business that they sell to that city gives them mercantile tax relief at the end because that money never leaves the city. And hopefully the goal is that, if that catches some steam, we can get more people in the city and get these businesses flush with money. You know, if somebody in the city sells toilet paper, and this guy owns a big business and he has got lots of restrooms, well, let's get these guys together and let's do business within the city. I think we're losing way too much money outside the city, and a lot has to do with taxes and some prices. But let's get these guys together at a table, let's get some leaders of business together, and let's see if we can get a Scranton sells to Scranton type of program going.
Okay, thank you. Dave, the question goes to you about public-private partnerships.
It's silly, I hate to keep giving the same answer, but first of all, let's see who's going to benefit, the public or the private. You know, what's that statement, something about they privatize debt but they social, or they privatize profits but they socialize debt, isn't that right? So, you know, it's okay when the government gets involved, but not when we get taken advantage of. You know, it's funny that, just a question prior to that was the quality of life ordinance. Who's ever experienced selective enforcement? Well, you kind of have the same thing with selective businesses. Give me a break, Bob Miracle could still do business in Pennsylvania, you got to ask yourself how. So I don't think we vet our businesses well enough, we let them come in, take our money, and then disappear. You know, I have a little plan for us, it's not going to raise a ton of money, but it does raise a little interest in the city. I think we should rent bicycles, and we should rent kayaks, and bring a little more exposure to our riverfront. I think we could do something private and partner with private business and the public as well in that. We have a lot of corridor associations, river associations, they could team up with private industry to try to bring businesses that sort of use that riverfront. What a waste of a riverfront. I like Wilkes-Barre because Wilkes-Barre has a beautiful riverfront. I think Scranton needs to recapture its riverfront, and perhaps if it did, it would bring more interest in the city. I have plans that are so big for Scranton, they're not even worth discussing because we have no money. So obviously, we have to focus on these smaller things. So when I tell you something like a little bike rental or a kayak rental might not seem like much, but people start coming and using that, maybe we bring in tourism. I want Steamtown to run people up to that area up there by Montage, and I want to try to encourage them to hike and bike up there. I think actually, and this is beyond the city of Scranton, but this is how I think, I think the city needs to open up these trails. You know how many acres we have around here, they're inaccessible by most people, they're deemed as not worth anything, and yet I guarantee you, a lot of people around here would pay a premium to ride ATVs and quads if we found a way to work out something with these private owners of this land, create a little bit of a fee or some sort of registration fee, and work on the liability issue because that's always going to be, these lawyers have ruined everything, I think we can all admit to that as well. So, you know, it's always going to be that, what are the obstacles we have to hurdle? And always, when the government and private industry can get together, as long as it's a mutual agreement and the taxpayer is the one they're looking out for the most, I'm going to support those ideas. You have to work with the business community, we are broke.
Thank you. So we have time for one last question before we move on to closing statements, and Tim, you'll answer this question first. Something that's always near and dear to my heart, Scranton has five college campuses located either totally or partially within our borders, and three more that are located in the county. What can Scranton do to sell the city to students and their families for both the short term and post-graduation?
What Scranton has to offer is it's clean and it's safe. What we don't have to offer are jobs for college graduates. And until we can do that, we don't have a good sales pitch to keep our young in the city. And I'm not happy to say it, I'm not saying that with a smile on my face, but we're trying to be real right now, and there's no one-liner, there's no little thing I can say that keeps someone here. I have a very good friend of mine, right after school, he moved to Boston. He loves it there, has a great home, great life, great wife. I moved away and came back. It happens. Being safe and clean is great, but it's not good enough. We need to start reinvesting in our city, we need the businesses to come back, and that brings the jobs, and that keeps the youth, and that spins the wheel, and that turns the engine. That's what we need to do.
Thank you. Dave, the question goes to you. What can Scranton do to sell the city to students and their families for both the short term and also after graduation?
I beg to differ about the safe and clean. I've been on these city streets, I'm on them all the time. First of all, I'd like to see these college students get out there and start cleaning it up. I was up in the Hill section the other day and being a graduate from the University of Scranton, I was very, very disappointed in the mess that I saw along the streets. I actually had to call my brother and say, was there a parade up here? So if they want us to give something to them, why don't they give a little bit back? I'm not trying to pick on the universities, I'm sure they provide much. We don't reach out to them enough actually for all their expertise and advice, we really need to use their experts. We need to talk to them, they got plenty of free opportunities I'm sure they could provide to us. And I'm sure they could come up with a lot of good ideas to tell us what their students are telling them of, what they want in the area. But of course, they want jobs, why are you going to college? You want a better job. You know, not everybody around here is a skilled tradesperson though, trust me. As a guy who does odd labor, I think it's simple to cut the grass, I hire people for 10, 15 bucks an hour, they can't even cut a straight line. They can't even cut a straight line. Not every job has to be a skilled job. So when people complain about manufacturing, you need to know your audience. You know, she's talking about college students. That's wonderful. So we need to have a more, you know, educated-type job for sure, but we also need the manufacturing base. We need to bring companies right downtown. I think we've tried it a couple times, but we failed. It's not how we keep the students, it's how we bring the businesses in. That's the question. The students are gonna stay if there's work here. Everybody's gonna stay if there's work here. You know, it's funny, my brother mentioned that perhaps up in Dunmore, they have a natural gas conversion plant, and I don't mean gas, I mean converting the vehicles to natural gas use. And maybe they have one in Dunmore, maybe not, I'm not sure, but I thought it was something that perhaps Scranton could do. We're like the natural gas boom area here in Pennsylvania, so you wonder why we haven't tried to expand any industries related to that. I mean, heck, everybody's talking about all the damages it's doing, but other people are getting rich. Shouldn't we find some way to trade on natural gas here, right here in Scranton? Can't we train our students, at least here in the University of Scranton, even if they don't stay here? And we probably are training them, no offense. If they don't, if they could stay in the city and work outside the city. But the wage tax is a huge issue. Who would want to work in a city where you pay more wage tax than you do in the surrounding areas? So again, I will defer to the fact that Mr. Perry brought that up, because it was one of my platforms as well, just a different idea.
Thank you. And Wayne, finally, the question goes to you. What can we do to attract students and to keep them here?
Well, Andrea, I think this problem's been going on for years and years. I know that, I actually was a volunteer for Scranton Tomorrow when new students, freshmen, came in, and we took tours of 10, 15, 20 students from Marywood University of Scranton, and walked them around town, and went to the different shops, and sort of got them indoctrinated to what we have downtown Scranton. We do have to find a better way to get the University of Scranton and downtown Scranton to be one, because that is a major, major market for the downtown. It serves both parties. That's something we have to do in the short term. Long term, obviously, is very, very difficult, because, again, we defer to what Tim said, we need to have the jobs to keep our students here, medical students as well as postgraduate students. How we do that? We grow our economy, and we grow our way out of this thing. And if we do that, people will stay.
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, we are out of time for questions this evening, but we do have time for closing statements from our candidates. And I want to remind everyone here this evening that the League of Women Voters is a nonprofit, nonpartisan, and volunteer organization. We invite you to join us. For those of you here, there is a membership form in your program. If you're not so inclined, we invite you to make a financial contribution on your way out, which will help us cover the expenses for these types of events. So, the person whose name was polled to give the first closing statement is Wayne Evans. So Wayne, I invite you to give your two-minute closing.
Thanks, Andrea, and thank you for hosting tonight's important debate. And thank you to the League of Women Voters for continually putting the democratic process up front for all to see, and as well as the viewers who have taken the time out to be engaged and informed about what's happening in their city. You know, I'm a small business owner. I'm a property owner, and I've been a community leader for four decades. And I bring that perspective to every decision I make on city council, and I feel I have been an effective city councilman. The theme of my campaign has been, "We can do it together," and I believe that wholeheartedly. If I, either I was working with the Neighborhood Association as a past president of the South Scranton Resident Association to improve our neighborhood, or as a member of the City Planning Commission to improve our city, I've worked with Scranton Tomorrow and the Architectural Heritage Association, and as a president of the Greater Scranton Board of Realtors, and now as your city councilman. I know how to get things done. And when you see my sign out there, you see that little W-E or "we." And what that means is, sure, it's my initials, but it's also the collective "we." It's all of us. We are Democrats, we are Republicans, we are property owners, we are small businessmen, we are students, we are senior citizens, we are Scrantonians, and we all want the same thing. We want a government that's responsive, efficient, and fiscally sound. And with your help, and your support, and yes, your vote, we can do it together. My name is Wayne Evans, and I'm running for Scranton City Council. I humbly ask for your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Tim, I invite you to make your closing statement.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrea. Thank you, League of Women Voters, the University of Scranton for hosting us, everybody home watching us, everybody here in the audience. It's such a great process that we have. Two gentlemen to my right, Dave and Wayne.